Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Luesbrance, Cascade Township Supervisor. Trustee McDonald has notified the board of his absence this evening and is excused. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Supervisor Luesbrance?
Here.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee Pierce, Treasure Pierce, sorry. Trustee Shipley?
Jim.
Trustee Noradike? Did I say it right?
I'll hold on.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Please rise if possible for the pledge of allegiance. Ready staff? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Article three, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion made.
Motion by? Everyone, how about trustee Shipley?
Okay.
Supported by?
Was it Castle? Thank you.
Trustee Castle to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carry. Article four, presentations. We have no presentations this evening. At our last meeting, Officer Omar Diappa made a helpful presentation on car robberies and thefts, and reminded us to lock and secure all of our vehicles. Officer Diappa will be returning in the near future to provide an update on their efforts. In the future, we will also be hearing presentations from different department heads, updates on special projects, and issues of concerns to our Cascade community. Article five, public comments. We will now proceed to the public comments for anything not on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to three minutes. I would note that the Larroway Lakes Special Assessment District Number One and the Thornapple River Special Assessment District Number One are both on tonight's agenda as public hearings. I would also note that a public information hearing regarding the PFAS situation here in town, similar to the recent informational hearing for the new fire station, hopefully will be held soon. This will be an opportunity to update residents, hear from our consulting engineers, and provide an opportunity to residents for answers to questions and concerns. I would like staff to prepare an informational meeting like that and submit it to this board for approval and scheduling as soon as possible. I recently met with State Senator Winnie Brinks, State Representative Thomas Albert, and also our County Commissioner Mandy Bolter, along with Manager Swayze regarding this PFAS issue. And I look forward to working with all of them. I consider this an absolute critical priority to Cascade. Deputy Manager Fast, do we have any public comment at this time?
Thank you Supervisor Luesbrance. If anyone has a comment for the board, please raise your hand and your microphone will be unmuted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. If you are joining us via telephone, please press star nine, and we will give you a chance to speak as well. And for the record, please state your name and address as well. There are no raised hands at this time Supervisor Luesbrance.
Okay, thank you, Manager Fast. Without any raised hands, this will conclude this portion of public comment. Article six, approval of the consent agenda.
I so moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support by Shipley.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments on this consent agenda?
I would like to have a comment that I think Sue did a good job capturing the fair and true synopsis of these minutes that were going to approve, so. I just want to put that out there for you, Sue.
Thank you.
Keep it up, keep that synopsis up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's a motion by trustee Nordhuck? I'm sorry, the Zoom is difficult to hear the audio.
Yeah, I actually made the motion Supervisor.
Okay, so motion by clerk. Could the trustee members, just for clarity, please restate who made the motion and also who supported it?
Clerks Slater, motion?
Support by Shipley.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Article seven, financial actions. The board has had an opportunity to review financial statements and reports. Is there a motion to receive and file financial statements and reports?
Is it just payables, payables and transfer?
Mr. Swayze, can you?
Payroll and transfers, right Ben?
Yes, so right now we're just doing payables, payrolls and transfers. The December financial reports will be available once they're finalized in preparation of the audit.
I would approve.
For a second?
Support Pierce.
Thank you.
Motion by trustee Castle, support by Treasurer Pierce. All those in favor, to receive and file financial reports and statements as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carry. Article eight, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none, we will proceed. Article nine, new business. First item number 006, 2021. Consider approval of purchase of Medic One and Chief's vehicles for the fire department. Mr. Swayze, would you please provide a brief overview?
So we have Chief Majors on the Zoom tonight, and if it's okay with you Supervisor Luesbrance, I'd like to defer my time to him. Okay, thank you.
Chief Majors, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, yes. So we're at that, at that time per vehicle replacement schedule that Car One, which is our command vehicle, and Medic One, which is our first out medic unit, is due for replacement. Our current chief vehicles, the 2016 Tahoe and our current Medic Eleven is a 2015 Suburban. Those are due for replacement at that five-year mark. Those two vehicles will shift down to fire prevention, where they'll go there for about five years, and then after that they'll go to utility status. And so, we're asking for approval of the purchase of Medic One, which is a 2021 Ford F-250, and a command vehicle at 2021 Ford F-250 as well. Both vehicles came in at government pricing around $35,000. Another 15,000 to 20,000 in upfitting, which is your light sirens, radios, wiring, slide outs equipment, all of that. And then another 5,000 or so in miscellaneous computers or radio replacements, et cetera. So what we're budgeted for is each vehicle not to exceed 60,000. We're expecting to come just under that. If anybody has any questions, I can get into details, but that's pretty cut and dry.
Thank you Chief Majors, are there any questions or comments from the board?
I don't know if you can see my hand raised, but Adam, you're, we're not going with the Suburbans this time, but switching to the pickup truck, and that is for what purpose?
Yeah, good question Jim. So industry trends in the fire service is to get away from SUVs due to carcinogens. So anytime you have a dirty set of turnout gear or any kind of contamination from a medical or equipment that is dirty, wet, has any kind of, any of those carcinogens or contaminations on it, in an SUV you're putting that into the passenger cabin. And that exposes the occupants to just a whole bunch of unnecessary exposures. And so the industry trend is to go with a quad cab pickup truck for a variety of reasons, but that keeps the occupant safe and contamination free. And then when it does eventually go to utility status as a plow truck or some sort of utility vehicle, whether it's carrying dirty equipment or personnel to and from class, a pickup truck makes a lot more sense, and it is cheaper.
Okay, thanks Adam.
Are there any more questions or comments?
I just want to say those are beautiful trucks, Chief, good job.
Comment, this was, this purchase was recommended by the Public Safety and Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Excellent.
And thank you Cascade residents. There be no further discussion. There be no further discussion, motion by, is that trustee Castle?
Yes.
Supported by trustee, or is there support?
Support by Shipley.
Thank you.
Supported by trustee Shipley to pass the motion for authorizing purchase of Medic One and Chief's vehicles for the fire department. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhuck?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes, and Supervisor Luesbrance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion carried. Item number 007, 2021. Consider final plan approval for Phase Two of Golden Valley. Community Development Director Peterson, would you please provide a brief overview?
Sure, thank you. So this is the final approval of the subdivision. This is located at Thornapple River Drive and Sixtieth. You've got on your screen here the plan that shows both phases, Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Two is the portion on the east side of the plan. So that's the portion that's coming off of Sixtieth Street. Final plan approval is essentially verifying that what we have approved has been built. And so that is what they are asking for tonight. Phase Two consists of the 15 units on the east side. Originally, this was coming through as one development, 27 units. The Health Department only approved the western side for approval for their septic system. They're using the common septic system. And once they got approval of the rest of the site for the common septic system, they could proceed through with this approval for Phase Two. So this is a byright subdivision, which means they are not asking for any special exceptions. They are doing it meeting all of our ordinance requirements. It's in the, it's in the R1 zone, which requires lot sizes of 80,000 square feet, because it is a no open space subdivision. You awarded final preliminary approval back in August of 2020. And after that time is when they were allowed to continue construction. That has all been done now, you got a report from our township engineer as well, and he's verified that the stormwater system has been built as approved. So recommending your final approval of Phase Two tonight.
Thank you Mr. Peterson. Are there any questions or comments?
Steve, I got a question. Who's, who's the developer of this?
His name is Don Campice.
Okay.
He's a property owner.
Okay, thanks Steve, just questioning. And, and then I have a question too. How many, how many homes are going to be on that septic system?
So it's going to be a total of 27, both Phase One and Phase Two will be on it.
What size is that drain field?
I don't know, I mean you have that in your plan that has been approved by the Health Department, so that's who's approval we accept.
I didn't see that in my, in my plans.
If you look, I know you, I know I gave you lots of plans in your actual packet. Steph, if maybe you could just put that site plan back up on the screen again? I know, I know I gave you lots of papers. So in that, I guess I'll call it the southwest corner, as you can see, kind of at the end of Golden View Court.
Yes.
That is the septic system.
15,000 square foot?
So, it's also, these common septic systems also have to be approved by the, by what's now Eagle, so it has to go through their approval process as well.
Does each individual house have its own tanks, its own septic tanks?
So it's all piped to that common area?
So no?
They actually have, they actually have what, you know, you would consider almost to be a sewer system in the development, but it's just all piped to one spot.
Okay. So community septic tank and drain field?
Right. We, we've had a couple of these, only a couple.
How have they performed?
We haven't had any problems.
I know there's a few of them out there that are disasters. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There a second?
Sir, Shipley seconds.
Thank you.
A motion by trustee Castle, support by trustee Shipley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carry. Item number 008, 2021. City of Grand Rapids Cascade Charter Township Consolidation and Contamination Risk Reduction, C2R2 Grant Application. As I noted earlier, I believe the board should consider ongoing community informational meetings regarding this matter, including presentations from engineers and other relevant parties. Mr. Swayze, please proceed.
Great, thank you Supervisor Luesbrance. So in 2018, the Gerald R. Ford International Airport was identified as a potential PFAS solution site. So PFAS substances are a large group of man-made chemicals that include PFOA and PFOS. PFAS has been used globally during the past century in manufacturing, firefighting, thousands of common household, and other consumer products. The chemicals are persistent in the environment and in the human body, meaning they don't break down, and they don't break down and can accumulate over time. So in recent years, experts have become increasingly concerned about the potential effects of high concentrations of PFAS on human health. And in your staff report, I included a link to the State of Michigan M Part website where you can read more information about the State of Michigan's PFAS response. So the PFAS issue related to the airport actually has two investigation sites. Both of those sites have individual pages on the M Part website as well. One site is on the airport property itself, and one is on the residential area that's generated, generally located between the airport and Thornapple River Drive. So for ease of the conversation, we've identified the area as the Berger Goodwood Neighborhood, though it has a bunch of other neighborhood names as well. So while the Michigan Department of Energy, Great Lakes and Environment has been conducting the investigations, and is the jurisdiction of authority in regards to PFAS pollution, the townships remain consistently connected with both the airport and Eagle throughout the investigation. So since March of 2019, Eagle has requested to sample approximately 475 residential drinking wells. Samples were collected from only those properties where Eagle was given permission, and there was a total of 364 samples that were collected in five phases. So through the five sampling phases, PFAS was detected in more than 60% of the results indicating a need to pursue long-term solution protective of public health for a large area. So Eagle has begun to focus on pursuing a long-term solution that would consider all sampled and non-sampled drinking well waters south of 28th Street, west of the Thornapple River, east of 36th Street exit off I-96, and north of the M6 exit off I-96. So as part of the process to identify and implement a long-term solution, both Cascade Township and the City of Grand Rapids are recommending pursuing a consolidation and contamination risk reduction or C2R2 grant. So through the program, grants being awarded to drinking water systems for projects that remove or treat PFAS or other contaminants in a drinking water system, or consolidation efforts to connect a system or private residences with contaminated residential wells to local municipal systems. So during this current phase, the maximum grant award is $5 million. The total amount available is $25 million. And entities that own and operate the public water distribution system or treatment system are eligible to apply. And that is specifically why the grant application is for the City of Grand Rapids and not for Cascade Township, because City and Grand Rapids is the entity that owns and operates the system. So this opportunity was announced in late 2000, late fall 2020, and the grant application period opened up in mid-December of 2020. So the township has worked with our engineering firm to design a project to extend public water to the entire Berger Goodwood Neighborhood and connect all those houses to the system. The estimated cost for that entire project is just north of $13 million. Because of the large cost of the project and the limitation on the grant award, the city and the township would divide the project into phases. Phase One would extend water main and connect the system to 256 houses at a cost of $6,49,725. So if we are awarded the grant for the project, the township, City of Grand Rapids, Gerald R. Ford International Airport, and Eagle would need to work together to determine where the remaining funds needed would come from. The grant performance period is three years, meaning the township and the City of Grand Rapids would have three years from the time that the grant is awarded in order to complete the project. So I included a couple items in your packet for your review. The first was the schematic of the Berger Goodwood Neighborhood Water Extension Project, and then I included a draft copy of the City of Grand Rapids Cascade Township Grant Application as well. So Eagle and the airport have been conducting their PFAS investigation since the middle of 2018. While the airport is leading the investigation on the airport property, Eagle is leading the investigation on the Berger Goodwood Neighborhood. So prior to 2020, there were actually no residential wells in the study area that tested above the previously established threshold of 70 parts per trillion for PFOA and PFAS compounds. However, in August of 2020, the Michigan Legislature adapted the new Part 201 cleanup criteria, which basically is the MCL that dictates the level of contaminants that needs to be reached in order for it to be contaminated. They set it significantly lower. So those thresholds are now eight parts per trillion for PFOA, 16 parts per trillion for PFOS, and they introduced a new threshold for PFNA, which is six part per trillion. So based on this new criteria, Eagles identified 40 wells currently in the Berger Goodwood Neighborhood that are considered contaminated. So in terms of how the investigation process is going, currently Eagle has issued notices, so the airport indicated that they've been identified as the responsible party for the contamination, and they're awaiting for the response from the airport as to how they intend to remediate the contamination or otherwise what their response is. So we'll say that that process is complicated a bit by the fact that the airport is a federally regulated organization and reports to the Federal Aviation Authority or the FAA. So we continue to stay abreast of that progress and are in contact with both the airport and Eagle regularly. So in the meantime, the township has consistently indicated to all parties that we believe the extension of public utilities to the affected area is really the only acceptable remediation for the PFAS pollution in this area. So to that effect, we worked with our engineering firm in the City of Grand Rapids to conceptually design the project to extend and connect all residences and neighborhood to the public water system. And we already talked about the total cost and the different phases. So we'll say that the Utility Advisory Board, which is, which I sit on, is the entity that oversees the City of Grand Rapids Water Sewer System, has approved of the grant application. So the city of Grand Rapids is ready to sign the grant application on behalf of the township with the blessing of the Township Board. So if it's approved by the Township Board tonight, the city would submit the application on or before this Friday, and it's anticipated that the grant award date would be on or before April 15th. So as I mentioned, the grant application is for $5 million with the initial projected cost of the Phase One project at $6,49,725. We will need to additional funding to be identified to complete the project. The funding can come from any number of sources and doesn't need to be resolved tonight. I just want the board to be aware that if we are awarded any or all of this grant application, additional funding sources are going to need to be identified. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have about the grant application or the project.
I do. Ben, will the homeowners be charged to get hooked up?
So as of right now, the, the grant application does not have a, a, a charge in it to hook up. The idea is that the funding would cover all of the related fees from the City of Grand Rapids, and the recommendation from the, the township would be that the connection fees on the township side is waived as part of our contribution to the, the project. And then the grant application or the project amount also includes the amounts to extend water to the houses, both from the main and then through the private entities, and then the abandonment of the water, contaminated water wells as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I've, I've had my hand raised. Ben, I want to ask you, depending upon what is determined by the airport, this is on property that is not associated with the new filtration system they put in for de-icing the planes, right?
That is correct, and that is part of the complications between the ongoing conversation with the airport and Eagle, is that per FAA regulations, they're actually not allowed to spend airport revenue off of airport property. The reason they were able to spend the money on the stormwater system to deal with the glycol issue is because that, that, that was actually wholly contained on airport property, whether it was property that the airport actually sits on or property that is congruent to the airport property that the airport owns.
Now, the grant application has no effect, I mean it's a grant, so we don't have to pay that back. But if the airport is determined to be the contributor of the pollution to these wells, then we can potentially have the airport pay for that.
Yes.
So there really, in my opinion, there is no reason not to suggest that the City of Grand Rapids pay for, or apply for that grant. Is that a fair statement?
So you say there's no reason not to apply for it, or there's no reason to apply for it?
No, not to apply for it. We have, we, we should have them apply for the grant, so that the $5 million, if approved, is available.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, yes.
Okay, that's what I see too.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I think it's clear that an informational meeting should be scheduled in the near future. The township will continue to make every effort to quickly disseminate information regarding that meeting. Is there a motion to approve and authorize the City of Grand Rapids Cascade Charter Township Consolidation and Contamination Risk Reduction, C2R2 Grant Application?
Shipley makes a motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Shipley, is there support?
I'll second.
Clerks Slater, seconded?
Thank you.
Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhuck?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Luesbrance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Item number 009, 2021. Second public hearing for Larroway Lakes Special Assessment District Number One. For the purposes of reviewing the special assessment role and for hearing all persons interested in the special assessment role, as well as any objections to the role. Mr. Swayze, please provide us with a brief overview before we begin public comment.
Great, thank you Supervisor Luesbrance. I also wanted to let everybody know that Township Special Counsel Cliff Bloom is joining us tonight. Has a long history with the Township Board, for those of you that may not have been here for a while. We chose him as special counsel for this project because of his expertise in developing similar special assessment districts across the, across the state. So Cliff, thank you for joining us tonight. So I imagine you guys are probably a little sick of hearing this, the way the special assessment district process works. This has to come back in front of the board numerous times, and I will say that we are nearing the end of the process. But just to give you guys a review, and in case there's anybody in the audience that might not be familiar with this, the township received a petition circulated by the property owners on Laroie Lake to make certain improvements to that body of water, including weed control and the removal, weed control and removal, and asked for the cost of those improvements to be special assessed against the parcels of land within the district. So the request is for the cost of land to equal, be equally assessed across all parcels in front, that front Laroie Lake, except the vacant parcels with, owned by duplicate homeowners. So they've requested the special assessment district to be implemented for ten years. The total parcel account for the district is twenty-three parcels, and the requested work to be done is approximately eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars per year, meaning each parcel would be assessed five hundred and four dollars per year during the duration of the special assessment district. So I will say this district is being established pursuant to Public Act one eighty-eight of the Public Acts of Michigan of nineteen fifty-four. We commonly refer to that as the Act or Act one eighty-eight. And it should be noted that while the petition has been received by the Laroie Lake property owners, the process is being moved forward on the initiative and the Township Board. Legally, the Township Board isn't compelled to carry through the special assessment district if it determines it is not in the best interest of the public. So in our January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Township Board meeting, the board authorized this public hearing. Notices were sent in accordance with the statute regulations to all occupants and owners that would be subject to the special assessment, and the required newspaper notices were published in the Grand Rapids Press. However, the Grand Rapids Press was unable to publish them in accordance with the established timeline. Therefore, the staff is not asking for the board to consider resolution tonight at the meeting, but we will in fact hold a second public hearing on February twelfth, which was noticed in those notices as well, before the resolution should be considered. So attached a couple items to your agenda. The first is the notice of public hearing for the Laroie Lake Special Assessment District Number One, the proposed special assessment role that was received by the Township Board at the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, and a copy of the estimated cost for the Laroie Lake improvements. So I already introduced Mr. Bloom, and he is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. So he has specialty in this work, firms helped to establish similar improvement districts across Michigan. So the cost of Mr. Bloom's services, as well as the other district costs related to the establishment of the district, primarily printing, mailing, and publication, will be charged to the special assessment district if it's established. If the special assessment district is not established, the township is responsible for those costs. So if the special assessment district is established, is recommended, the Township Board approve an ad hoc committee consisting of township staff, officials, and residents included in the SAD to provide direction on the expenditures of the special assessment district dollars. Although final appropriation will always be at the sole discretion of the Township Board, the establishment of the ad hoc committee will occur, would be recommended to occur with the adoption of the final resolutions. It's anticipated that the establishment of the district costs between twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars, again, insisting primarily of legal fees and printing and publication costs. Again, I mentioned if that, if the SAD is established, they can be recovered through the SAD. So if established, it's anticipated the SAD will produce eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. Those funds need to be kept in a separate fund and can only be utilized for the purposes outlined in the special assessment district plan documents. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and as I mentioned, Mr. Bloom is here to answer any questions you may have as well.
Assistant Manager Bass, do we have any public comment?
All right, first, first, will I make a motion? We adjourn the regular meeting and go to public hearing?
For.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Castle. Support by Treasurer Pierce?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Les Prince. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak on this matter, please raise your hand and your microphone will be unmuted. We ask that you state your name and address for the board. If you are joining us via telephone, you can press star nine and your hand will be raised that way. There's no public comment Supervisor Les Prince, but Manager Swayze has a raised hand.
Thank you. Manager Swayze, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that we did not receive, for this public hearing, we did not receive any written comments or questions beforehand.
Thank you. There be no further public comment, the public hearing is concluded.
We have to make a motion.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I made it.
I will second.
And we already voted?
No.
No, now we vote.
Okay.
Can't vote before the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public hearing is concluded. Item number zero one zero, two thousand twenty-one. Second public hearing for the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District Number One. For the purpose of reviewing the special assessment role and for hearing all persons interested in the special assessment role, as well as any objections to the role. Mr. Swayze, please provide us a brief overview on this particular assessment.
Great, so my intention isn't to get into all the minutia again, but just talk about the differences between this special assessment district and the other one that we talked about. So for this special assessment district, the petition was circulated by members of the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association to make improvements to the Thorn Apple River. This one includes weed control and removal, debris removal and safety enhancement, silt control removal, and also asks for the cost of the improvements to be special assessed against each parcel of land within the district. So the request is for the cost to be equally assessed against all parcels that front the Thorn Apple River between the dam and Sixtieth Street, and includes those parcels that have township-owned property between it and the river. So they have requested the special assessment district to be implemented for fifteen years. The total parcel account for this district is three hundred and three, and the requested work to be done is approximately ninety thousand nine hundred dollars, reaching each parcel would be assessed three hundred dollars per year. So we're using the same act and the same process. We had the same issue with the Grand Rapids Press. So again, we're asking not only for the public hearing to be held tonight, but also to be held on February tenth before any decision or consideration of the fourth resolution in the process is considered. Again, Mr. Bloom is helping us with this special assessment district, and again, the same recommendation for the ad hoc committee will be made if the fourth resolution is approved, because there's quite a few more mailings for this special assessment district. We're anticipating costs between five thousand and ten thousand dollars for the establishment of this special assessment district. I will note that I have received quite a few comments, and my intention is to read them into the record tonight. But before we get to that point, I'm happy, or Mr. Bloom is happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you.
Mr. Bloom, Timmy here. Do you know how many of these parcels are actually in Thorn Apple River Association?
You're muted, Cliff.
Manager Swayze, also, if you have this information.
Yep, I can answer while Steph is working on getting Mr. Bloom unmuted, but
Thank you.
My understanding of the River Association is all of these entities would have the ability to join the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association. However, I don't know, I would assume that they are not all members because that's a voluntary organization.
Do we know how many associations are on the river?
I'm only aware of two associations, the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association, which would be those above the dam, and the Cascade or the Thorn Apple Association, which would be those houses below the dam.
Manager Swayze, which dam are we referring to?
It would be the Cascade, the Cascade Dam, so the one that's in Cascade proper.
Just for clarification, though, are both of those associations subject to this assessment?
No, so this assessment is only for property owners that fit the description in the area above the dam.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, ma'am supervisor?
Mr. Bloom?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we can. Let's get some money's worth out of your time tonight.
Fantastic, I'm sorry, I had some technical difficulties.
We all do.
Yeah, that is, in my understanding, neither of the associations actually own a lot on the river?
That is my understanding, but I guess.
But let's clarify, we are just talking, excuse me, I'm sorry, we are just talking about the one association, the one below the dam has nothing to do with the special assessment district.
Correct.
That is correct, yes, and I'm unaware of the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association owning any property. When the public hearing opens, Mr. Scott Rissy is here to speak on behalf of the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association, and he can confirm or correct that assumption.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right.
Assistant Manager Bass? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Mr. Swayze, go ahead with the written correspondence we've received.
Yep, so it's time for Manager Swayze's storytime, so I have quite a few of these to get through. For sake of ease of recording, I'm going to go through the comments that we had in support of the special assessment district first, and then after that I will go through the comments that we received opposed to the special assessment district, and then we can go from there. So. The first one is from Amy Dowling, thirty-five twenty-eight Goodwood Drive Southeast. I, Amy Dowling, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Second item is from Jeff and Amanda Carpenter at five oh one six Sequoia Southeast. Jeff and Amanda Carpenter support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. We request that our comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Jeff and Lisa Dion, twenty-nine eighty-four Thorn Apple River Drive Southeast. Our family supports the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that our comments be entered into the public record. Next item is for Dennis DeCock, forty forty-five Maricaybo Shores Drive. I support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next one is from Mike and Carrie Almasian, and I apologize to anybody that's listening right now if I massacre your name. I'm doing, I'm doing the best that I can. This one reads, Mike and Carrie Almasian own seventy-two fifty-nine Sixtieth Street, and we support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District. We ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is for Clarence and Elizabeth Maring residing at forty-five sixty-seven Little Harbor Drive Southeast. We reiterate our support, the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District, and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that our comments be entered into the public record. Next is from Diana El Meyer, resides at three four 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 Goodwood Drive Southeast. I, Diana Meyer, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from John Mayer. Three four 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 Goodwood Drive. I would like to request you vote in favor of resolution number four, supporting the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and formally establish the district. I am a resident of the river and have been at three four 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 Goodwood Drive since nineteen ninety-five. I firmly believe we need this district established in order to protect the integrity of the river. Multiple bayous have filled in since I purchased, and the weeds have gotten worse, especially upriver from the Forty-Eighth Street Bridge. This is a good thing for the river, the community, home values, and the tax base. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Doug and Chris Bauer, three one seven seven Thorncrest Drive. We, Doug and Chris Bauer, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Jeff Rochio, fifty-nine sixty-nine Tannen Court Southeast. I, Jeff Rochio, or Radio, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. I was also wondering if the township would consider clearing the rocks from the river at Sixtieth Street by pushing them to either side of the river. This would provide safe passage for boaters, making the river more usable while using the rock to protect the shoreline from erosion. This could be done during river drawdown. Next item is from Mark and Kathy Oberlin, sixty-five seventy-five Burger Drive. We, Mark and Kathy Oberlin, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Shirley Nitzel, fifty-sixty Sequoia Southeast. I, Shirley Nitzel, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Jim Van Hoven, forty-eight sixty-four Sequoia Drive Southeast. I, Jim Van Hoven, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Jesse and Rebecca Clem. They list three addresses, seventy-two forty-nine Kilmer Street Southeast, seventy-seven thirty-three Sandy Howell Drive Southeast, and seventy-seven fifty Thorn Apple Bayou Drive Southeast. I, Jesse Clem, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Dean DeGraff at forty-six twenty-three Little Harbor. I, Dean DeGraff, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Thank you, Dean DeGraff. I live at sixty-fourty-six twenty-three Little Harbor Drive and have been currently adding roughly five feet per year of cattails and silt built up that keeps filling in front of my house. If someone does not do something, all's that entire shallow area in front of my house and all my neighbors is going to fill in with cattails and muck. I'm willing to pay my part and also pay more if someone is truly going to spearhead this. Anyone that is knowledgeable, please feel free to give me a ring. The next item is from Mary Kunkler at fifty-nine sixty-nine Tannen Trail Court. I, Mary J. Kunkler, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from SJ and Rusty Trap at seventy-four hundred Whispering Ridge Street Southeast. We, Sally Jo, SJ, and Richard Rusty Trap, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from Maynard Butts, forty-eight ninety-six Sequoia Drive Southeast. I, Maynard Bill Butts, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from Chris Branoff, Christopher and Kimberly Branoff at seventy-four eleven Alaska Avenue Southeast. We, Christopher and Kimberly Branoff, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from Mike Dale, forty-sixty-one Maricaybo Shores. I, Mike Dale, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is for Joshua and Rachel Ralja at forty-fifteen Maricaybo Shores. I, Josh Ralja, support the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve resolution number four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Sharon Latenga, 7358 Cascade Road Southeast. I, Sharon Latenga, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from Walter F. Perschbacher, 7486 Cascade Road Southeast. I have lived on the Thornapple River here in Cascade Township for 25 years and I support and appreciate all the work done by the Cascade Thornapple River Association over the years, including the proposed Special Assessment District. I support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District, propose and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from James and Sharon Stein at 7169 Placida Court Southeast. We, James and Sharon Stein, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. We request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Heather and Tracy Walker, 4984 Sequoia Drive Southeast. We, Heath and Tracy Walker, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. Next item is from Paul and Leanne Rollin. We, Paul and Leanne Rollin, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. We request that our comments be entered into the public record.
What was that address?
7176 Aqua Free Court Southeast.
Thank you.
The next item is from Harry III and Sherry Herbrook at 7314 Cascade Road Southeast and 7340 Cascade Road Southeast. Harry III and Sherry Herbrook support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from Sandy and Diana Kingsland at 7370 Cascade Road Southeast. We, Sandy, Diana, Kingsland, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from Michael and Sheila Reed at 7275 60th Street Southeast. We, Michael and Sheila Reed, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next one is from Torrin Scott at 4593 Little Harbor Drive Southeast. My wife and I, Torrin and Brenda Scott, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from David and Kristen Heck at 7300 Cascade Road Southeast. David and Kristen Heck support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. We request this comment be entered into the public record. The next item is from David and Julie Lewis, and there is no address listed on this one. I'm in favor, hello, I'm in favor of the assessment for maintenance of the weeds and sediment and obstructions to safe navigation in the cascade portion of the Thornapple River. I've lived on or owned property along the Thornapple most years since 1991. It needs our help to remain safe and beautiful waterway. Please approve the assessment. Next item is from William David Lewis. No address given. Hello, I'm in favor of assessment for maintenance of the weeds and sediment and obstructions to safe navigation in the cascade portion of the Thornapple River. I've lived on or owned property along the Thornapple most years since 1991. It needs our help to remain safe and beautiful waterway. Please approve the assessment. The next item is from Barbara Skinner, 3024 Thornapple River Drive Southeast. I, Barbara Skinner, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from Donovan and Stephanie Shepherd at 5110 Sequoia Drive Southeast. We support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next item is from Darwin Cutler at 6884 Sequoia Drive Southeast, sent from the email of Diane Cutler, Darwin's daughter. My father Darwin Cutler has asked me to reaffirm his desire and commitment for a Special Assessment District to be established for residences along the Thornapple River above the Cascade Dam for hazard removal, silt maintenance, which is his priority, weed management. He requests the board vote to establish this district. My further, my father further thanks the efforts of Manager Swayze and the Cascade Thornapple River Association for their years of work on this project. Please include this note as part of the comments during public hearing. The next item is from Brenton Shelley Smith at 7478 Cascade Road Southeast. We, Brenton Shelley Smith, fully support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. The next one is from Mo and Liz D'Amgani at 5985 Tannen Court Southeast. Excuse me. We, Mo and Liz D'Amgani, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. And the last comment in this section is from Don and Kathy Ladner at 7394 Kilmer Drive Southeast. Again, that's 7394 Kilmer Drive. We, Don and Kathy Ladner, support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you approve Resolution Number Four and formally establish the district. I request that my comments be entered into the public record. So those are the comments from the pile that were interpreted to be supportive of the Special Assessment District. Now I will be reading comments from, that we received prior to the public hearing for those that have interpreted to be against the public hearing. Or again, sorry, against the Special Assessment District. And the first one is going to come from Peter and Judith Kenny at 5600 Alaska Avenue Southeast. We strongly object to the Special Assessment District proposal. It is unreasonable to require one group of residents to be responsible for the future maintenance of the Thornapple River. Many others use this river. South of 60th Street contributes to the river problems. People beyond the dam have access. Castle Park in Cascade allows access enjoyment of the river and Roos Park on 68th Street provides commercial and private access to kayaks, canoes, and floats. According to the Corps of Engineer, no one actually owns the river. Access is through easement. Much of the sediment in the river is caused by runoff from the dirt roads owned by Kent County and Cascade Township. The proposed assessment group does not include all people in associations with easements to the river. Chemical runoff from the airport and Thornapple Golf Course have and will continue to cause many of the river problems. Personally, we do not use the river and feel this is an unnecessary effort to support boaters at our expense. The request for this proposed assessment does not state what the assessment costs will be per year nor the duration or what the expenditure plan will be for those funds, other than loosely put together pie in the sky bunch of ideas. If this is for public improvement enhancement for boaters, then all the public, quote, cascade, should share the cost and have boat access. A public boat launch should be built at Tassel Park if possible to accomplish this task, not the current unlicensed fee-based private river association boat launch being offered to a few operated by the Thornapple River Association. Talk to Mr. Rissy for details. If one wanted to accept this crazy logic, the people living on the river should be responsible for maintaining, cleaning, redirecting, dredging, etc. The river, why not ask the cascade homeowners that have walking trails that run by their home have a special assessment placed on them to maintain, take care of those trails? Or anybody that has a sidewalk that runs by their house? To extend this question logic even further, have a special assessment requiring them to maintain all the sidewalks. In a second comment, they indicate why are we having this discussion about assessment in the middle of winter? Couldn't this be done in person this summer? Hopefully after COVID, when most people affected are back from their winter retreat. Why the rush? Is the current commercial boat launch facility operated by Mr. Rissy properly zoned and licensed by the state and complies with all local ordinances? And finally, I believe all waterways in the state are owned by the state. How is it possible for the township to collect money for a private organization and allow them to do anything on the river without state approval? If the approval has been requested and approved, please post it on your website for all to read. Would you plead read this aloud at the upcoming meeting? And not just read to the board, along with the email forwarded to the board, January 5, which was the first part of that comment. The next item is from Paul and Luanne Strauss at 7474 Alaska Ridge. We, Paul and Luanne Strauss, do not support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District in its current form and ask that you not approve Resolution Number Four for the following reasons and questions which are currently unanswered or not clear or easily accessible. Request that our comments be entered into the public record. One, the proposed river projects are too vague and open-ended. There should be more detailed plan that is easily accessible to all property owners affected. Two, cascade residents who own property in the Thornapple River already pay more property tax than equivalent cascade properties not on the river. Why not use the extra tax revenue currently being charged to citizens on the river toward the river maintenance? Three, the current but dated information on the Cascade Dam shows that it generates a minimum of $50,000 in revenue annually. Why not use a portion of this revenue toward river maintenance? What is the current dam revenue? Four, we already pay $150 a year to the Cascade Thornapple River Association, which is already supposed to pay for debris removal and access to the Rissy Boat Ramp. While I very much appreciate Scott and Hazel Rissy allowing us to use their private residence boat lamp, this is not a permanent solution. If the special assessment passes, would we still be required to pay the boat ramp fee or would this be included in the Special Assessment District? Since the special assessment almost exclusively benefits property owners with power boats, I propose that if the special assessment is passed, a portion of that money is used so that the property owners being assessed have boat ramp access with no additional cost. Five, we do not see the need for weed control or aquatic plant control at this time. We have not experienced any engine or navigation issues due to weeds. We have experienced cut weeds on our shorefront, however. Six, we strongly object to dredging around the train trestle. Seven, it is not clear who will control the $1,263,500 in revenue generated by the Special Assessment District. Do the citizens who are in charge of the assessment have any say in how it is spent? It is also not clear how much the assessment can be increased when it can, or when it can be increased. All this information should be easily accessible to every resident affected. The next item is from Mark Andrew Cowitz from 7365 Kilmer Street Southeast. This letter is to serve that I, Mark Andrew Cowitz, at 7365 Kilmer Street, do not support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you do not approve Resolution Number Four as written. I request that my comments be entered into public record. My concerns are, one, the committee now becomes the sole decision makers of how the money is to be used and what part of the river it is spent on. Two, the special assessment indicates that the estimated amount could be possibly raised over the period indicated and that residents might be assessed more in coming years, leaving this open-ended for increased assessments. Three, eradication of aquatic plants and weeds is a never-ending situation. Nature will win in the end. The golf course at Thornapple Point undoubtedly runs off tons of fertilizer and other chemicals used to keep their course in good shape. I am wondering what they and the Kent County Airport are paying. Is it the same per household assessment? Do they get charged anything at all, as I saw neither of them on the list? Given the amount of PFAS the airport has dumped into the river, it seems they should be picking up all or most of the tab for environmental improvements on this stretch of the river. Four, there are several neighborhood associations that have been multiple boat docks, boats docked and have access to the river, but the boat owners do not live on the river and will pay nothing in assessments, leaving only the property owners identified in your recent letters responsible for footing the bill. As an alternate, five, as an alternate suggestion, perhaps raising boating licensing fees for people who likely enjoy the benefits the most pollute the river and the most that do the most damage to the aquatic environment is a more equitable solution. Also eliminate any areas that are near the dam for this use, for the use of this money. Last, a sound and detailed proposal of how the funds are to be used. In closing, I feel that businesses contiguous to the river should be assessed the most for the profit they gain. Many of us are on fixed incomes, retired, and can't afford this assessment, especially given the fact that our property taxes get maximum increase form the county every year. I care very much for the river and the aquatic environment. There are many along this river who do not. Many. I do not believe that this general proposal does anything to the benefit the majority of us. My vote is allowed an absolute no. The next item is from Rob, Robert S. Bayan at 3148 Thornapple River Drive Southeast. Please take note that I am protesting and objecting to Thornapple River Special Assessment District, number one, that is scheduled for a public hearing on January 27, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Next item is from Dawn Swider. I don't see an address on Ms. Swider's comment. I am writing to express my concern regarding the special assessment for the following reasons and do not support moving forward as published. My concerns are as followed. Home within associations that have river access should be accessed, should be assessed. I know that some of these homes probably do not use the river, even though they have access, but I have many neighbors that live on the river that also do not own boats. Two, what is the plan for controlling contaminants from moving down river during silt removal activities? I would be very surprised if the silt did not contain contamination. Three, 15 years is a long assessment. Seems like a lot could be accomplished in five, seven, or 10 years. Or yearly debris removal seems excessive, as I assume most of that would be trees, i.e. fish habitat. Looking forward to hearing the discussion tonight. The last item, which I will forward to all the board members and include in the packet next week. I'm not going to read verbatim because it would be in excess of the three-minute time period. But it comes from Mr. Stan Grunskey, who lives at 3056 Thornapple River Drive Southeast. It should note and be recorded that he opposes the Special Assessment District. It should also be recorded and noted that he opposes the Special Assessment District because he doesn't feel that he has, his house has river access in the spirit of the Special Assessment District. He also notices that the first round of public hearings, his property was not listed on the initial list of properties to be included. So again, I will include, I will include all these to the Township Board, but I'll make a point to include this one as well, because there's quite a bit more verbiage in this. I also wanted to note that I've had an opportunity to visit the Grunskey's house, and I will say that I am in agreement with their assessment. And in fact, the Township Assessor in 2018 removed, removed the riverfront designation from their property. I've been in contact with Mr. Bloom about this property and we both agree that it is appropriate for this property as well as the property across from Mahesh Drive to be removed from the Special Assessment District role before it is finalized. And with that, those are all the written comments that the township has received in regards to the Special Assessment District.
Good stuff, Ben.
This is to Manager Bass. Do we have any public comment?
We do. If anyone would like to comment, please feel free to raise your hand and we'll unmute your microphone. You're joining us via telephone, please press star nine. And right now, Supervisor Lesprance, we have four raised hands. The first resident is Sherry Grunskey.
Welcome, Ms. Grunskey. Please proceed.
She's muted.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is Stan Grunskey, not my wife Sherry. I'm using her iPad. First of all, I want to thank Ben very much, very much for mentioning this this evening. We really appreciate the opportunity that he came out and looked at it and took some photographs and I understand he's forwarding it to, to the trustees. I'm glad he is really involved with this. I know there's a lot of things on his plate. But I think for a lot of people who have the objection to this, and hopefully that he'll also take this into consideration. Again, a lot of things going on in the township and the first notice obviously was a mistake and I, I can understand that. This is sometimes human people get involved in names and addresses should be on there and should not be on there. So again, thank you very much. Hopefully that you will decide that our address, 3056 Thornapple River Drive, will not be assessed at $300 a year for 15 years. So again, Ben, thank you very much for coming out and talking to us about this.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lesprance, if I could make one comment before we keep going. I noticed that I missed one of the, the negative comments and I wanted to read that in the record before we continue.
Thank you.
So this one comes from Ann and Steve Tar, who are at 7319 Kilmer Drive Southeast. We and Ann and Steve Tar do not support the Thornapple River Special Assessment District and ask that you do not approve Resolution Number Four as, as written. We request our comments be entered into the public record. Our concerns are, one, the committee now becomes the sole decision makers on how money is. Our concerns are, one, the committee now becomes the sole decision-makers on how money is used and what part of the river the money is spent on. Two, the special assessment seems to indicate, if we are reading it correctly, that the estimated amount could possibly be raised over the length of the time slash installments, and that residents might be assessed more in years to come, leaving this a quote "open-ended for increased taxes." Three, eradication of aquatic plants and weeds is a temporary fix to the natural existence of river life and is time-limited. Fertilizers being put into the river only perpetuates the problem.
He's right there.
Only perpetuates the problem. This may help for the time being, but could be a never-ending battle against nature. Four, there are several neighborhood associations which have multiple boats docked and have access to the river, but the boat owners do not live on the river. There are also several property, private property owners who have quote loaned out or quote rented river space to others who do not live on the river, i.e. friends or neighbors. Property owners are now responsible for the fees for those people. Five, if the river is dredged, is there testing of the water being done before and after with regards to PFAS and other contaminants? Six, there appears to be ongoing stress to the river caused by the increase in boat sizes and their large engines, which are likely ones who are more often hitting stumps, hitting bottom, and getting caught in the weeds. Seven, we all love the river and we want to see it well-cared-for, but need to consider at what price? Thank you, Supervisor Lesprance.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a resident. I would remind everyone to please state their name and address clearly for the record. And next is a resident whose display name is Galaxy Tab A twenty sixteen.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Galaxy Tab A, you'll need to unmute your microphone. I've attempted to do so.
Can you hear me now? And before that?
No, sir. We're just hearing you now.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. My name is Albert Sears at six six two five Burger Drive. I oppose the Resolution Number Four. My wife and I both do. We have some problems of, of the way it's being done. The golf course definitely doesn't give us any money, and they're a big offender, and the airport likes to dump chemicals. We're kind of against the chemicals to kill the weeds, so our poor river doesn't need more chemicals. And we, I personally row up the river from the dam to the golf course during the summer several times, and there's no weeds until you get to the golf course. So there is money we're paying to have someone else's weeds removed upriver. I, I don't think that's right. And it also, also, we don't own any powerboats. We enjoy the river with kayaks and, and canoes. And I, I know that the powerboaters do abuse with the, the waves that they cause with the skiers and the wakeboards. You can tell on the shoreline, it's, in some areas, it's getting worse. And I would like to see maybe they pay a little more, and maybe we should pay by frontage. Also, I have a very small frontage compared to almost everyone else. And so I've got to pay the same. I don't think that's right either. I, I just have to, I guess, go on record of Albert and Carol Sears saying no on the Resolution Number Four. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Sears.
Okay, next we have Lori Gottlieb.
Welcome, Ms. Gottlieb. Please proceed.
She's muted.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having this and hearing me. Lori Gottlieb, seventy-one hundred Cascade Road Southeast, and my husband Jeffrey. We oppose, object to this assessment. I have a question. I wonder how many of the three hundred and three parcel owners signed the initial petition to get this brought up before township? Once, if this is a pass, then it's a district, considered a new district, and thus open after the fifteen years for more taxes. We sit on a piece of property that's high up, does not have access. We cannot drop a boat in, so we have to beg, borrow, and steal if we wanted to, which we don't. I agree with the last gentleman who spoke. The wakeboards are out of control. Where we're at in the river, it's, I'm not even sure the, the width of the river, but there are wake boats, speed boats going crazy, and I'm surprised we don't have better ordinances for noise, crowding. Wake boats should not be on a river. If you're concerned with the river and preserving it, those are made for lakes. Those are made for big body, bodies of water because they simulate the same thing as a surfing, surfing does. And that's what, that's what it's simulating. It's sinking down to the bottom and is creating huge wakes. Our property is eroding. Is this assessment going to pay for the seawall that we will need? There's like five houses along our property that are sit up high that are eroding really bad. Every summer, it gets further and further because of the wake and the waves. So we object to this. We don't want more chemicals. Everybody is using the river. Everything everyone said I, who disagreed, I agree with. I also wanted to say, I know, Grace, you are trying to make things more transparent and forefront. I feel, and I appreciate that, and I, that's why I voted for you. I feel, again, this was sort of dropped on us as citizens. We're already paying more because we live on the river and we have frontage. But again, if we don't object, it's going to pass. There's a lot of people who go south for the winter. There's people who don't have computers, who can't do Zoom calls, who weren't aware. My, a couple of my neighbors didn't know this was going on. And so we had to communicate to make sure our voices could be heard. So I just think that we need to slow down and take our time. And if I could find out how many people did sign the initial petition out of the three hundred and three parcel owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Swayze, do you or anyone representing the River Association here tonight have that information?
So I, I have the access to that information. I don't have it right now. I can certainly provide that answer during the next public hearing.
Thank you. Let's make a note to answer that and get back to residents. And also, if there is anyone representing the association here tonight in the audience, we would appreciate hearing from you on that also. Any other public comments right now, Ms. Fast?
I'm trying to get Mr. Rissy unmuted to answer your question.
Thank you.
I think I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you. Proceed.
All right. Scott Rissy, seventy-two thirty-eight Cascade Road. You may need to refresh my memory on the questions. I think one of them was how many people were in support, and it's.
How many of the three hundred and three total signatures?
Yeah. We were at fifty-nine percent, I believe, at the last count, were for the special assessment district. That's who.
And fifty-nine percent of what, Mr. Rissy?
Of, of three, of three hundred and three total parcels, fifty-nine percent of those parcels signed in favor of the sad.
And that three hundred and three, is that association members, lots on the river? What's the three hundred and three?
The, the, basically, all of the properties between the Cascade Dam and Sixtieth Street, which is the upstream to the township line, are eligible to be members of the Cascade Thornapple River Association. That entire area of frontage on the Thornapple River, every parcel equals the count of three hundred and three. And so all of those parcels that are in the township on the river, total three hundred and three. That includes the parcels for the golf course. It includes parcels that there are homes on, where there aren't homes, the parcels of the airport, everything. That's, that's, that is the total included number. And of that three hundred and three, fifty-nine percent of the people signed the petition in favor to move forward.
Fifty-nine percent of the parcels?
Yes, of the parcel owners.
What was the rate, how would the golf course be counted as one of those three hundred and three?
I'm not sure how many parcels they have off the top of my head. I want to say they have two or three, but they would be charged the same way. When we started this process at the direction of the residents of the river back in two thousand fourteen, we realized that we needed to, to deal with this problem. The Ada Association was putting pressure on us as well as other people because upstream and downstream, there are practices and processes in place to take care of the invasive species of weeds. And our association was not doing anything. And so we were exploring options. We went down the road of the special assessment district. I actually had the pleasure of meeting with Cliff Bloom. He gave us some legal counsel. And through that process, we discussed the options of whether we should go per parcel or per frontage foot. It was determined that per parcel was the appropriate way to go. There are obviously hardships doing that. Some people have smaller parcels. Some people have wider parcels. Some have more, some have less. But that was the, that was the direction that seemed to be the most logical, and that's, and so that's why it was chosen.
Thank you. And what about Mr. Rissy? Maricavo Shores. Do you know how many parcels they have on the river?
I don't remember. You know, if you'd asked me this five years ago, I could give you the exact numbers. I think they have around.
That's right. We'll just make a note and we'll get back to this.
Okay, they have several homes off the river, and they have probably eight or nine on the river. The, the reason we did not choose backlot owners is because there, that number of about three hundred and three would jump up to around four hundred and twenty-five. And in order to initiate this, we needed over fifty percent support. If we include all of the backlots, which many of whom do not use the river, they just benefit from the added property value, it would, number one, it would require a ton more effort and volunteers going door-to-door to try and get signatures, which was the thing that held back our numbers the most, I think. And number two, many of those backlot owners would, would most likely not be supportive. And so again, in the discussions with legal counsel and also in meeting with your predecessor and, and Manager Swayze, we decided to, to go at it alone, so to speak, and just go with the core frontage owners and not include the backlots.
Do you know how many part, how many residents within Maricavo Shores, how many docks or boats are available to those neighbors?
I think they have fifteen slips, but I am not sure off the top of my head, but there are.
Does the spirit of the language of the assessment allow for that, that particular parcel to be assessed fifteen times? One per user of the boats, and we could, in the spirit of the assessment, modify the wording to take into account those particular users?
I would refer that question to Legal Counsel Bloom.
Mr. Bloom, if you can hear us, are you able to answer that question?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Just to clarify, I did give the association legal advice, but Scott, time, time moves fast. That was a number of years ago, wasn't it?
It was. And, and this actually has been, this was submitted to the township in two thousand nineteen, and we have had some hiccups along the way. We got into a little bit of a distraction with the airport, and that took some time away from us. And, you know, I think, I think we met in, in fourteen or fifteen. And, and so, you know, that's just, unfortunately, this, this is where we're at in the process now.
Madam Supervisor, if I can, one of the issues that always comes up on lakes and rivers are, obviously, you, you, you assess the front lot owners, but what about backlot owners? And as people have pointed out tonight, there are a number of access sites easements. And we generally advise municipalities not to include the backlot owners or easements because there are so many problems. You know, how do you assess them? Do you assess if it's an easement and there's twenty families? Do you assess them one twentieth each? Do you assess them, you know, ten percent, five percent? It creates significant problems. And in most of these districts, if you included the backlot owners or the easement holders and so on at a reduced rate, it really doesn't normally reduce the rate of the front lot owners that much.
Mr. Bloom, what about? Excuse, Mr. Bloom, does the township, in setting up this special assessment district, have the authority to modify the language such that if we were to determine what specific slots, how many and to whom they belong in Maricavo Shores, that we could say there were nine slots, then that we could, in the interest of equity or the spirit of the language of the assessment, assess those nine particular backlot owners due to their easily provable river access?
Madam Supervisor, in theory, yes, but let, let me, let me address that in a couple different ways. First of all, the township board in Resolutions Two and Three already decided, obviously, to proceed with the special assessment. This is the role, just confirming the role, not the merits of the district. So we would really have to renotice everything because since day one, it was based on just riverfront parcels. Second of all, I can tell you, I do a lot of repairing real estate work, and we would have to locate every single easement access on the section of river. And it would be probably quite difficult, number one, just to come up with all of those, and then we'd have to look at them and assess the benefit because the, the amount charged for those backlot owners has to be proportionate to the benefit. So theoretically, the answer is yes, you could, but the township board would have to step back a couple steps, do that research, start over, and most municipalities do not assess easement holders and backlot owners because of the difficulties involved.
Thank you. And in this, if, if the township board were to suggest that, could the burden of that, the time burden and the labor burden somehow be placed on those in the association that, that are very much in support of this assessment, as well as those on those lots who are, who have expressed opposition to that? So that your time, while very valuable but also expensive, properly, but still, as well as our time, is minimized, and then the burden then is placed back on those residents to work it out, figure it out, and so it, we reach the most equitable outcome. Is that something that is possible to take into account those, those restrictions?
Yes, certainly, we could ask the River Association and others to do that. They could help us. It might involve some title searches because there are a lot of rumors in any body of water, what the access sites are, who owns them, are they easements, are they co-ownership? We'd still have to do a certain amount of due diligence. So the answer is yes, it could be done. It would probably be fairly time-consuming. And then we get into a situation where if you modify it, there might be counter petitions because you would count the backlot owners, and that could stop the whole district. So theoretically, yes, it could be done, but the township board would have to back up a few steps.
Thank you. And so for, for anyone, those, of those residents that are listening tonight who are very motivated one way or the other, why don't you take time, address those comments specifically, such as Mr. and Mrs. Grunskey or others, and then we, as the township, can, can kind of start to look at that? Are we so far along, Mr. Bloom, in this process that we're essentially rubber-stamping this assessment right now?
Well, obviously, it's important. The board, the, the, the function of the board for Resolution Number Four, which has been pointed out, will not be decided tonight because you're going to continue this hearing into February, is what properties will be in the district? So if, if the board collectively decides that it wants to add backlot owners and sort of at least consider that you can start the process, but I think we still have to back up one or two steps to do that.
Well, isn't there a problem with Goodwood? Goodwood has an association. They were able to put in a boat ramp and a dock as a result of the township having to buy a p, access through a property they owned on Goodwood. And, and I don't know how many years ago it's been, John Meyer would probably know there is access to the Thornapple River. So I suspect the Goodwood Association will be assessed. If there's anybody in Goodwood that can address that, that would be fine. But those, that access can only be given to a certain number of lots within that Goodwood Association. So we wouldn't want to go assessing all those backlots either because not everybody there uses the, and the same.
Does the board have the authority to, to figure out which lots would have access and then assess just those lots?
Well, go ahead, Kev.
I'm sorry, Jim. I didn't want to interrupt you. No, go ahead.
Okay, that's okay. I'm done. Okay, that's okay. I'm done.
Yeah, the the answer is. Es- essentially, Madam Supervisor, we would all almost have to do an assessment or a census of all the lake access, or excuse me, river access sites. So the answer is it can be done. It would be rather difficult. And the board then would have to grapple about how much of an assessment you would charge to the backlot owners. And there might be various classes of backlot owners. Some backlot owners might only have uh, the right to pedestrian use to walk to the river. Others might have dockage rights. So the answer is it could be done, but we'd have to back up a few steps and it would take some work.
Mr. Bloom, when you talked about different levels of access, that same may be true to those who actually own frontage on the river, depending on their lot, weeds, dock, access, different things. And is that, am I correct that this assessment as written does not take into account any of those variations?
That that's correct. The topography varies greatly, as everyone knows, along the river. So the way this was set up, if you have one riverfront lot, you pay one assessment. Someone mentioned earlier, what about doing it on a frontage foot? Legally, there are several ways you can assess. You can do it as a per taxable riverfront parcel, which is a proposal. You can do it on riverfront uh, footage. You can do it on assessed valuation. You can do it on size of a lot. Again, probably ninety-five percent or more of these assessments around the state, just do it on one, on a per taxable parcel basis. But again, you're right.
Thank you. Based on the language of our current, of the language currently in this special, Special Assessment District, sa- save for, it make the assumption that we've got a property owner with a steep hill, act- river, river uh, riverfront owner, steep hill and weeds, not able to have a dock. And then we've got a uh, property owner backlot in Maricavo Shores who has the nicest specific slip on that nine or so whatever boat uh, boat slip. How would those two be um, assessed in this situation, based on the current wordings?
Yeah, in this situation, unfortunately, given the statute and so on, this is not a precision way of doing things, but your implication is right. The uh, riverfront property owner, which is considered riverfront, would be assessed one assessment. And is currently the backlot owner, would be assessed zero, under the current proposal.
And if we were to look into this more closely, is it possible for the township to put the legwork, legwork on those residents who are both in favor of this and brought it to the board, as well as those who are opposed and voice those concerns? Rather than spending our time and also your time and money on this issue?
Yeah, I think they could do a lot of legwork, but ultimately township staff, myself, still has to do our own due diligence. And that would certainly help a lot. But ultimately, we'd still have to fill in the blanks and look it over.
Thank you.
And one of the problems with that is uh, neighborhood associations um, like Goodwood, uh, may allow access for their members. But not all peop- i- i- isn't it true, Cliff, that you can't force an individual to join a a neighborhood association and pay dues? That's an option that they have. So if we go that route, what, go ahead, Cliff.
I'm sorry, Jim, there's a kind of a delay. Unless it's in their deeds. There there are deed restrictions, as you know, in some associations that force you to belong. But most of them do not.
Yeah, so you have that problem if you go with outlaw assessments too. Potentially.
Madam Supervisor, if I could, I think if this is the route the township goes goes, we'll probably have different classes of backlot owners. So there might be a class A, a class B, and a class C, depending on what their easement or their access looks like. And you might ultimately decide to assess some different percentages.
And what about if we've got different classes for backlot owners, based on their individual circumstances? What about different classes for front lot owners who right now are automatically included?
Yes, you could do that. I mean, you mentioned the lot that is topographically different, so you might end up with two or three classes of uh, front lot or riverfront owners too. Now, keep in mind, obviously, two things will happen. This will complicate the administration of the district. And it will also likely increase appeals to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. Because when you're fine tuning it, I think it makes it more difficult. But certainly, everything you suggest can be lawfully done.
If Mr. Rizzi is still in the audience, how do people on this section above the dam access uh, or put boats in and remove boats? I know that uh, below the dam, there's a private parcel uh, that members can pay a fee to access. Uh, but but how do they access in this situation, those affected?
Supervisor Lesprance, I I will answer that. If I could back up one quick second. Uh, you guys focused a de- a great deal on Goodwood and Maricabo, but the River Association knows uh, of, has a pretty good handle on how many backlot owners there are. And you have to remember that there are several neighborhoods beyond just Maricabo and Goodwood. Uh, there's probably seven or eight. So there are a lot of backlot owners. I could name them off. I'm going to save the time and not do that. But the uh, so I mean, it it this, this ends up being a monumental task to document all of that as as uh, um, Legal Counsel outlined. It's, it takes a lot of time, but obviously, we could, we could work with that. As far as access, uh, I I happen to know a lot about that. Uh, and I got on the board in nineteen ninety-eight. We actually tried for two years to get uh, Maricabo Shores to work out a deal to launch the boats of the residents of of the association, essentially from um, the dam six miles upstream. And and we were unsuccessful. We had two or three other attempts that many of the township staff members, I'm sure, are familiar with. At uh, in a couple of places, we tried to purchase land to put in a ramp for for users. And in other spots, we tried to lease land. Uh, none of those ever really got off the ground. There was actually, at one point, a discussion with Manager Cravens and the Goodwood Lot Owners and the Association to to do something together related to the water pipe that uh, Trustee Castle Castle brought up a little while ago. And in the end, uh, about seven years ago, I happened to be uh, blessed to the point that I was able to buy a piece of property on the river. And it happened to have a boat ramp in my yard. And I did not want to be a hypocrite after advocating for years of the River Association to have a ramp for everyone to use. So I struck a deal with the River Association to allow homeowners on this stretch of the river to launch their boats uh, through my property, if they're members of the association. And so anyone in that section of the river has the right to pay their dues and join the River Association. And then they can launch their boat in the spring and retrieve it in the fall. And everybody that lives in this section of the river has been uh, made aware of that. A big reason for this whole push was the Township Keyhole Ordinance. And the fact that there were a lot of people that were letting people in and building ramps that were in violation of that ordinance. And in the early two thousands, when I was president of this association, we had a few developers looking at large tracts of land that were fifty, sixty acres. And they were looking at developing those with marinas and launches for backlots, which was against the keyhole ordinance. But we had so many residents on the river with frontage that were violating the keyhole ordinance and and cheating their way around it to get access to the river, that we felt we needed to do something to strengthen the ordinance. And that's why I took the steps to, with the River Association, to get the special use permit and make sure that all of these people could have legal access. Because I did not want the keyhole ordinance to to have uh, to be weakened and have a developer exploit that.
Mr. Rizzi, are you compensated for uh, these people using, for these these riverlot owners using your access?
Well, compensation is, uh, I guess, it depends on your definition. Most of my, yeah, mo- most, most of my costs of upkeep have have been uh, are 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 reimbursed from the association. I would say I'm in the rears at this point. And we've only been doing this, I think, for three years now. And it will probably take a number of years to pay for for the damages and and improvements that I've had to make to my property to accommodate the nearly fifty boats or so a year that I have to launch uh, a few weekends every spring and every fall. But uh, I think it's worth it.
You launch those boats for the owners?
I I assist uh, as as part of the agreement I made with the township. I I have to be present uh, uh, most of the time. And I have to schedule that and take time out of my day. So when you say compensated, I get some compensation. Is it uh, equitable to my my loss I incur? No, absolutely not. It is not a profitable adventure, if that's what you're asking.
No, I just had no idea what the setup was. And I I didn't know if you are compensated directly by residents or if it comes out of the association or even have any idea what that amount would be. I I I'm not familiar with this.
The the River Association has fifty-dollar dues for its members. If you want to launch a boat, they charge an additional hundred dollars. I get a portion of that launch uh, membership fee. And and they get charged a hundred dollars uh, as part of their membership to the association. It doesn't matter if they have five boats to launch, you know, a pontoon boat, a ski boat and two jet skis, or if they have a canoe. It's the same rate. And it doesn't matter if they come six times or one time. It's the same rate. So that's.
You have canoes, do you have canoes that come, do you have canoes that come down to you for la- launching versus their own yards?
Well, yes, because a lot of the people, as you pointed out earlier, have high bank properties. There was a woman that was on Cascade Road who could obviously contact me to get access to the river. And and they can't drag a canoe or a kayak up and down a large bank. So they come down and 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 do it here.
Once the Special Assessment District is set up, would those fees for launching and whatever cost uh, go through that and be covered through this taxing? Or would it still go directly um, or indirectly to you through the association? Or does our, does this special assessment tax cover access in and out via your property for those who to use it?
No, no, it is completely unrelated. It is, it is completely unrelated and has nothing to do with this whatsoever. We we put all of these facts about what the sediment, the Special Assessment District is online and had countless public meetings that everybody on the river, including the backlot owners, were in included in those discussions as well as direct mailings. And uh, nowhere did we ever outline access as being part of the uh, Special Assessment District. The association uh, at the time, uh, we didn't have a access point. But we did, we decided that it was not appropriate to tie that in with the SAD.
Um, what about uh, is the association at all, or I know it's, I'm going, prevention? Any preventative measures if we've got the uh, the golf course, ongoing chemicals and that stuff? Any preventative or other alternatives before the township is engaged in this private uh, area? Any any other alternatives explored?
Well, we we have, um, you know, you talk about preventatives. We tested soils in two thousand and five, again in twenty fifteen, uh, to check for contaminants. We, since the golf course was built, the River Association has tested water upstream and downstream. We actually, uh, if if Mr. Peterson was still on, he would remember this. A number of years ago, our association got a grant to start doing water testing and and to try and get some baselines of what the changes were here. And the Ada Association and the township, as well as Ada Township, invited us in to show them what we had done. We kind of pioneered the start of their program. They just were able to take it much further than we were. As far as, it it, well, as as far as studying everything as a whole, as as for prevention sake, um, you know, we don't have a a uh, specific prevention in place, other than the association has been spending about five thousand dollars a year on cleanup of the river. And it cannot continue to sustain that with its current income structure and dues structure that it has. It's that that is probably its its best pre- prevention that it has at this point, besides education.
If the association or residents on the river were to go back and and as Trustee Kessel pointed out, there are different neighborhood associations, go back, do the leg, legwork, put the, put the um, the burden on those associations to figure out which residents would be appropriate with of use of the river, which do not. Could you guys, would you have the ability or the desire to do that? And then bring it back to the township so that we could have more confidence that this is the best, most effective and equitable situation before we commit to this?
You know, that's a difficult question. I, at this point, I I don't want to just say a hard no here. Because if, at the beginning of this process, when we approached the township back in twenty fourteen, we would have, we would have gladly gone down that road. But the discussion steered us in the direction we've gone. And so I feel that we've, we've already traveled the path. And we're kind of at the end of the path now. Uh, to make a U-turn and go back to the beginning is is discouraging. I'm not saying we can't do that. I just feel that we, 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 we already navigated past that, that part of of the trip.
Was the Special Assessment District itself, as far as our township participation, am I wrong? I believe that started in the summer of two thousand and twenty, before my time, but within the last twelve months.
No, no, we, we, before we initiated this process, the first step we took was we spoke with legal counsel. And then we spoke, we had a meeting in twenty fourteen with Manager Swayze, uh, another member of of the River Board, myself and uh, your predecessor, Supervisor Bayhand. And and we had a meeting. And at that meeting, they threw a different strategy for us to go through this. It, which was a little different than what what Legal Counsel had advised us to do. The idea was that it was going to be a little less expensive and a little less strenuous of a process. It would take longer. But but it it, we thought, the River Board thought that it worked well. And we chose to align ourselves with the township's process because we felt, hey, we're asking the township to do this. We should go along with their process. And so that's what we did. And and we spent uh, several years working on it. We gathered our signatures over uh, uh, I don't know, there's probably around a hundred and sixty signatures. And then, and we validated it. I think we probably delivered the most accurate validated package uh, i- in history to the township. Uh, which for a all-volunteer-run association, probably the largest association in the township, we were pretty proud of.
Mr. Riz- excuse me, Mr. Rizzi. Mr. Rizzi, do you remember approximately when the township board began addressing this and notices were mailed out? Not the initial behind-the-scenes preparation on your end, but rather board action?
About a year and a half after we, after we dropped it off, about a year after we dropped, it would have been uh, probably was was what, about five months ago, four months ago? The Manager Swayze probably has a better idea on that.
Four, four to five months ago, before we as a board, granted, I was not part of this, but the township board, despite years in the making on your end.
Well, we gave it, no, we.
Board level.
We gave it to the township in October of twenty nineteen. And from that point forward, it has been on your desk. The ball has been in your court.
Excuse me, Mr. Rizzi, do you understand that my desk is what is up for the board's agenda? Staff desk, the staff's responsibility is to prepare for board approval. So it is not only because of my predecessor being in office up until November. It is because, my question is specifically, when did the board, who was ultimately making this decision, become involved? Secondly.
I can't answer that.
One moment, just one moment, Mr. Rizzi, please. This Special Assessment District does not benefit the township whatsoever. It does not benefit anyone other than those who access the river. So it is not accurate to say that it has been up on this board's agenda. And it is not accurate to say that it is too late for this board to approve. I think it is extremely equitable, given the fact that you are asking us, or the association is asking us, to impose a significant tax burden on many Cascade residents, that we do our thorough job before we impose them with that mandatory burden. And frankly, Mr. Rizzi, I think it is in your best interest that you go ahead and do the necessary background work before you bring this to the board. So I appreciate your comments. But I have some concerns. And I think that there is no reason to rush this tonight or on the first meeting in February in two weeks. And frankly, I don't think it's so far along in the process that taking a brief, brief, several months break to make sure that we get it right before we are on the hook for making this decision is improper. Thank you.
Supervisor Lesprance, I want to make sure we get this right. That's what I absolutely want to do.
Very fair to the board and also to those residents.
But I I do have to say that I submit, our our association submits the information to staff. When it gets to your desk, I don't know that. That's a, that's a, that's a township thing. I'm saying, we rid ourselves of this in October of twenty nineteen. We handed it to township staff and we haven't, we haven't had our hands in it since. We have been patiently waiting on the sidelines for this, for this period of time now. So that's, that's what I am stating. And and.
I am stating, Mr. Rizzi, that I'm happy that we have this public hearing tonight. So that we, as board members, along with township staff, and then all those residents who are affected, including those opposed and those highly in favor, can all be on the same page. Thank you.
I I agree. And we, as an association, have already had numerous public hearings on this too. But in the township has been present at some of those as well. I would also say.
What do you mean town, the township? Who's the township?
Uh, can we move on to get some other comments from anybody that had?
Uh can we move on to get some other comments from anybody that has comments to make? We're getting in an argument here that's not necessary.
Trustee Kessel, I, I appreciate that. I'm not trying to get into an argument. I'm trying to.
Well, let's get into the other public comments and see what they are.
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you. The next resident that has a comment is Carrie Gorsuch.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Please proceed. You can.
Yeah, Carrie Gorsuch, three zero four four Thornapple River Drive, neighbor to Stan and Sherry Grunske, whose comments I heard earlier. I was on the Cascade Thornapple River Association Board for a while. And during the time when we were trying to get these signatures, and it, it was quite a process. Obviously, I'm in favor of the resolution. I do think um we need to take care of the river um in every way that it requires it for safety reasons and um also because it's a valuable asset, I think, to the entire township, not just to those who live on it. Um, I think that's why it's in the Cascade logo there behind our clerk there. But um I just wanted to register for the public record that I am strongly in favor of the resolution, but also strongly in favor of the township helping out however they can. I, I think it is a township resource. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next resident is Craig Merlin.
Thank you. Mister Merlin, please, please proceed.
Um, thank you. I'd just like to ask two questions. I understand there were, I understand there were a number of notice problems in the September, October time period in terms of people who received notice that their property was not on the list and therefore didn't participate in any of the further hearings because they weren't on the list. And other people never got notice of any of those hearings in the fall. Um, does that affect the legality of those meetings that occurred that Mister Bloom says in essence approve the Special Assessment District?
Thank you, Mister Merlin. Uh Mister Bloom?
Madam Supervisor, I'm just getting bits and pieces of what Craig said, but I, I know there was an error in the most recent public hearing notice uh mailed out a couple of properties were clipped, but I, I'm not aware of any from last fall. Ben might address that.
Uh so it's the, it's the opposite. There weren't any issues with this past one. Uh in the first round of notices that were out there, there was um, all of the properties were delivered notice. However, there was uh about seven properties on Thornapple River Drive uh that were clipped from the, the listing. Um, one of them being Mister uh Gris Grunske, who, who we addressed tonight.
So that every, so that everyone who should have then had notice of those public hearings in the fall did not receive official notice of those hearing.
Madam Supervisor, can I address that?
Please.
Yeah, it's my understanding that everyone did receive notice. The problem was that the ones that were mailed, like half a dozen properties were clipped off the list. But they still were, everyone was mailed the lit, everyone was mailed the public hearing notice. It was in the newspaper. It was posted on the website and it was in the resolutions. So the error was simply that a half a dozen of the permanent parcel numbers listed in the public hearing notice that was mailed was clipped off, but, but everyone had noticed, is my understanding.
Hey, that's different than what I had understood. I had understood that some people, like Mister Grunske, received the initial notice, confirmed his property was not on the list, did not receive any further notice that his property was then included on the list and so did not attend, and that his neighbors along Thornapple River Drive received no notice personally of the inclusion of their property on the um that the inclusion of their property, even though they are, have riverfront access, they would have had no personal notice of being on any list or being part of the Special Assessment District.
Madam Supervisor, if I could address that again, there are also multiple descriptions in the various documents that included all riverfront properties between the dam, and I forget what the other was, Sixtieth Street. So I think it was a relatively minor error that in my legal opinion should not affect the validity of the district.
Thank you, Mister Bloom. And have those residents affected been um provided notice?
My understanding is they got the second notice, and I think, again, I'll defer to Ben, but I think all of them where the, where the permanent parcel numbers were clipped were aware of the hearing.
Thank you.
Is that correct, Ben?
That's correct. Yes, they are, they're all, so the clipping was corrected for the round of notices that went out for the public hearing that we're having tonight.
Okay, the next resident is Jeff Carpenter.
Welcome, Mister Carpenter. Please proceed.
Yes, can you hear me, Supervisor Les Prince?
We can. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I just wanted to, uh I, I am in favor of this and I, one of my comments from my wife and I were, were read into the record earlier by Mister Swayze, so I appreciate that. You, you asked a question, Supervisor Les Prince, and I, I want to make sure I clarify something. I am on the CTRA board. I'm the, currently the secretary. And I just, you, you talked about sort of the difference between when people were engaged and when the board was engaged. And I think that's a, it's a fantastic question. I think it deserves just a little bit of clarification uh because there was a little uh confusion a few minutes ago. So just briefly, so when the process started in two thousand and fifteen, clearly it took three or four years to achieve uh the signatures that we had to get. We submitted in October of two thousand and nineteen. We delivered those validated signatures to staff, and I do appreciate that. I, I work in a government agency myself, and I know that you have staff and then you have elected officials. So we did sit back and let that process work itself out. Um, it is a significant process, and I know that the rest of the board members have probably heard more of this. But you know, there are ten, or excuse me, twelve steps per the state statute. And I just want to point out for the record that steps one, all the way through step eight, which we are at right now, concluded successfully over the course of approximately five months. So starting back in September up through now. All along the way, there were votes by the elected officials and by some, some, some were not on the board at the time, um not anymore. But those votes happened. At every step in the way, the Cascade Township Board of Trustees voted unanimously to move to the next step. There was no dissent by any member of the elected Board of Trustees. So when we got to the current step we're at, from our perspective, we've had support to move along. Now, clearly, as Ben has pointed out, it is at the prerogative of the board to move, and we understand that. I would also mention that because of some confusion with the Grand Rapids Press, even during our first set of public hearings we had back in the fall, we were subjected to two public hearings, just like is happening this time. So typically, the state statute would require a single public hearing at the earlier step in the process. That would have, the one happened in the fall. And then there would be a public hearing now. Because of the mistakes and because we wanted to be fully transparent, and I agree with Manager Swayze at the time when we talked, it was go for a second public hearing. So in fact, the public has actually had two hundred percent opportunity to comment along the way. And after each one of those public hearings, there was unanimous vote by the Board of Trustees up to this.
The first public hearing on this, on this particular section is tonight. And then because of those notice issues, and in the interest of transparency, the second public hearing will be two weeks from now, the first meeting in February. So for a process that started in two thousand and fourteen, at a board level, township level, we were able to correct that notice situation and, and up and multiply times a hundred percent the note, the um, the public notice opportunity within a two week timeframe.
Yeah, Supervisor Les Prince, may I just correct one point here and, and just, just for point of clarification? I want to make sure we're all on the same page. This is actually the second set of public hearings that have happened on the Special Assessment District.
Were there noticed errors on both sections?
It, in, in the, the first public hearing that happened in the fall, that is pursuant to Resolution Number Two, we're at Resolution Number Four right now. So an earlier resolution, and each point, the board has to affirm that step. Because of some mistakes that were made, and Manager Swayze can affirm this, we had two public hearings at that step as well. So my, I'm, I'm only mentioning this just to point out that there were extensive opportunities for the public to comment in the fall. I would argue double the opportunity. And then we're having that same thing happen. Now, I have no objection to that. I think it's fine to do that, but I wanted to make sure that it was clear that there have been public hearings on this topic. And at every step in the way, it was a unanimous decision by the Board of Trustees. I realize that it's in the moment and the current Board of Trustees is a different Board of Trustees than it was in the fall. Um, but I just wanted to point that out, and I do look forward to, to continuing to work with the township. I'm in this for the long haul. So thank you for your attention.
And, and you're not suggesting that because people voted a certain way in the past that we continue that rather than look at the actual facts and equitable situation that is in front of us, right?
No, no, this is, this, this is absolutely an iterative process. I would agree with you there. Um, I just wanted to point out that those things had happened. And uh if there's anything.
And I guess, do you know, do you know from having been along this whole process that the two notice period, public notice periods that are required, one several months ago and then two starting tonight, did we have to double that on both occasions because of notice errors? Because I know on this second part, we're doing that.
Um, yes, 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 we did, Supervisor Les Prince. We absolutely did. That is correct. And Manager Swayze can verify that.
And what was, you say, the, the board received this at our plate forty five months ago at step one. What was step one as far as that brought the board into this particular um situation?
Um, my understanding is that step, it, it's actually step two in, in the list. So I, I know that this is kind of confusing. Step two is Resolution One. So I know this is, this is government stuff here. So Resolution Number One was in the, when the Township Board adopted their, and declared their intent to make the public improvements. That actually precedes the first public hearing. So Resolution Number One, which received unanimous vote, uh was to adopt it and essentially move forward. Then after that, there was that first set of public hearings that we had to double up on in the fall. And then there's the, the, some intervening steps. And here we are now at step eight, which is Resolution Four. I, I wish they had letters and numbers because it gets so confusing. But um I, I would agree that it would be Resolution Number One in the fall uh when the board actually decided whether you wanted to take the financial step. Because this was a, this was a big decision by the board at the time to say, we affirm that this is something we want to even engage on and have to engage with council and, and spend the money to do mailings. And the association obviously appreciated that at the time because it showed that, that we, you know, we turned in nearly sixty percent affirmative, um, you know, signatures. So we felt, you know, that, that affirms that this is worth pursuing. And I think at every step of the way, there's been a lot of good dialogue. I would also encourage any of the board members to review the presentation that we did back in the fall where we had a fairly organized PowerPoint presentation that laid out some of these things as well. So I, I think I've exceeded my three minutes and, and I'll, I'll take any questions if you authorize.
Sir, as Secretary of the Association though, and I understand that the board just picked this up within the last, less than six months.
Yes.
And that, that I, and I can appreciate the fact that those pursuing this and, and obtaining public uh signatures for this, it takes two thousand and fourteen, six plus years. But is there a willingness on your end uh and those within your association to perhaps do a little more legwork that would, that would lessen the burden on our end and on other residents and on our township council to maybe go back and, and see if there are uh some that may not be uh included that should and also some that are included that may not be, just in the interest of what's equitable and what's right?
Um, you know, so I, I'll answer that in, in two ways, Supervisor Les Prince. One, I, I believe that the members of the board and then the folks that support this are in this for the long haul. Um, I, I, I certainly intend on passing down my property to my children, so I have this, I have a long game in mind. So i- if, if I could say, of course, we want to work to make these things happen, and we recognize that there are hiccups along the way. My second part of that answer, though, would be to say that nobody on the board is a legal expert in property law and, you know, interpreting deeds and some of these things. I've, I've had to look up things for my, my platted subdivision that was done in nineteen sixty-two. And it's been very challenging even to read the, the, the documents that were written with, in calligraphy. So I think that we would probably want to take just a moment to reassess your question, at least come up with a, with a response to the manager to say, what would that take? Because I don't want us to go out on a limb and get out of our lane, if you will. But I think to, the first part of my question is, of course, we're in this for the long haul. And we recognize that, that there are, there are missteps along the way. Um, I do feel very confident in the process up to this point, Supervisor Les Prince. If I could just add one more thing, that when we did our presentation in the fall, we outlined, and it's in the public record, the number of times that the association communicated with members of frontline owners, as we've been discussing, in a myriad ways. We had four or five in-person meetings. We had half a dozen paper mailings. We had emails, Facebook page posts, and just on and on and on. And we really tried to be multimedia in the way we reached out to people because not everybody comes at this from the same place. And we felt we did a very good job in that regard. But you know what? We're here, and this is about going forward. I'll end my comments with this as a river analogy, right? Water under the bridge for what's happened up, up till now. And I think we would certainly redouble our efforts, but we would want to make sure we do it staying in our lane and not, you know, getting outside of our core competency, which I think is caring for the river and not property law. So I appreciate that question.
And we do have Mister Bloom, whose specialty is right hearing, right?
Well, how appropriate.
And, and you can thank Mister Bloom, the township and everyone for, for covering our bases on that. It is interesting. So fifteen, three hundred and three right now lots would be assessed as tax. And I understand that you did a lot, you and many others did a lot. You're, after years of collecting, you've got fifty-nine percent of those. So you've got, what is that, forty-one percent who did not get on board, but yet would be on the hook fully with this assessment, should the board approve it?
May, may Supervisor Les Prince, may, may, may I respond to that very briefly? May I respond to that very briefly? So in, in, in the collection of those signatures, while we did get to the fifty-nine percent, I cannot give you the empirical number of the people we did not communicate with. However, in a door-to-door effort with volunteers, it is highly likely that we did not get to every single person. So while fifty-nine percent were the, in the affirmative, I do not believe that forty-one percent were necessarily against it, Supervisor Les Prince. I believe that there is a percentage of people against it, and I think you're seeing today. You saw forty plus people in support and you saw four or five people against. And so that's maybe an eight to one ratio. You know, there are prob, we probably could have gotten more if we continued. The township basically told us, you know, we, we've spent three or four years at this. We really need to turn this in now. And the state statute says fifty-one percent. We thought we're at fifty-nine. Let's not stretch this out another year. Um, but I do not think that means there were forty percent against. But I certainly agree with you that there are people that are against it. We've heard from some of them tonight, and they're entitled to their opinion. So thank you for letting me respond.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next resident is Jeff Hoogstra.
Thank you, Mister Hoogstra. Please proceed.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Just want to, again, thank the uh association for doing all the legwork that they have. But also just wanted to affirm the fact that my wife Shirley and I at seventy-two eighty-eight Cascade Road are in favor of this uh proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no additional raised hands at this time, Supervisor Les Prince.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
To close the public hearing?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Sue.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Slater, support by Trustee Shipley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion, Carrie. Article ten, closed session. Staff has recommended to the board that the board enter closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act fifteen point two six eight H to consider material exempt from discussion. Disclosure by state and federal statutes. Closed session is for a specific issue only, and any action taken must be done in open session.
Uh, don't we have to make a motion on the last agenda item other to move forward? Like we did.
No. It was just a public hearing.
But, but on, but are we going to set the public hearing again, Ben, for February?
Uh, it was, it was already noticed to carry on. Cliff, I guess I'd, I'd ask you for your recommendation if they should take official mo- uh motion to continue the public hearing on the tenth, or what you would recommend?
Yeah. Madam, Madam Supervisor, with your permission, yes, I think the, the best way of doing it is a motion to continue the public hearing on whatever date you've set in February.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
To re, to, excuse me, Trustee Kessel, can you restate that motion just for clarification?
Go ahead and hold the public hearing on this matter on the twenty, or on the tenth of February.
Is there a support?
Support.
Motion to continue the public hearing to the next board meeting, February 10th, 2021, by Trustee Castle, supported by Trustee Shipley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Going back to the closed session, uh, again, this is for a specific issue only and any action taken must be done in open session. Is there a motion?
Move for you to adjourn the regular meeting, go on to closed session.
Support. Motion by excuse me.
Go ahead.
Motion by uh Treasurer Pierce, supported by Trustee Castle?
Castle.
To enter closed session pursuant to Open Meetings Act 15.268H to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statutes and upon completion of this closed session, to return to an open meeting and completion of said meeting agenda items. All those in favor? Or excuse me, just, excuse me, Clerk Slater, please call the roll on this one.
Okay. Trustee Shipley?
Yay.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yay.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Clerk Slater? Yes. Supervisor Luesprance?
Yes.
Thank you.
I could, Supervisor Luesprance, if I could just make comment real quick?
Please.
So I will be leaving here and I'll be opening up the uh closed session uh in about three minutes. Um, and then just a reminder to the public that we will be returning to uh the open session after it's done.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we uphold the denial of the FOIA
Oh wait, excuse me, Clerk Slater, Clerk Slater, sorry. Should we first motion to return to public hearing?
Oh yeah, yeah, my bad.
I make a motion, we return to public hearing.
Timmy will support that.
Not public hearing.
This public meeting.
Public meeting. Correction. Thank you.
So it's Castle, no, Shipley and Castle?
Timmy.
Timmy.
Thank you.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now back in public session. Clerk, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion uh to uphold the denial of the initial FOIA request on December 18th for Manager Swayze um in support of continuing to deny the appeal because we have no documents.
Support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
December 18th, 2020. You give the year, December 18th, 2020.
He's saying December 18th, 2020, Sue.
Oh, yep. Correct.
And Clerk Slater, could you call the roll on this, please?
Sure. Treasurer Pierce. Trustee Castle. Trustee Nordhook. Trustee Shipley. Clerk Slater? Yes. Supervisor Luesprance?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the motion carried. We will now move on to article 11, public comments. Assistant manager staff, do we have anyone wishing to comment at this time?
Um, anyone wishing to comment may now raise their hand. And you, I will unmute your microphone. If you're joining us via telephone, you may press star nine. There are no raised hands Supervisor Luesprance.
Thank you. Article 12, manager comments. Manager Swayze, would you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
You mean you guys didn't hear me talk enough tonight?
Manager Swayze, there's never enough time to listen to you talk.
All right. I just had a couple of items I wanted to, to talk to. Um, so the next iteration of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Executive Order starts on February 1st. Uh, unfortunately, that still uh contains the information that we're not allowed to have any indoor meetings uh that has more than 10 people or more uh than people from two households. Uh, and the MTA has once again released their opinion uh that townships are not allowed to hold in-person meetings uh while that is in, in, in the order. So that one goes into effect February 1st, goes until February 21st. Uh, so it looks like we are in virtual meetings until then. Uh, I will say that the DDA, the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeal Chairs have indicated a desire to remain virtual all the way until March 31st. So currently, that's the longest time period that uh the executive order would allow those boards to meet virtually. From the township board's perspective, they have to meet virtually at least until February 21st. Uh, and I would recommend that at the February 10th meeting, uh, we have a uh discussion on whether, what the preferences of the board to do uh once we are allowed to start having in-person meetings again.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Article 13, board member comments. Do we have any board members wishing to comment?
Me. As always, as always, I'd like to thank anybody that's out there in the uh bits and bites land for attending the meeting tonight. And I encourage them, whether they like what they heard or didn't like they, what they heard, to come back again. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments or
All set.
Hearing none. Is there a motion? For our 14. Trustee Shipley?
I make a motion that we adjourn the board meeting of this date.
Second?
Right here, support.
Supported by Trustee Nordhook? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Bye.